Good morning. I'll call the December 2024 as Municipal Planning Commission meeting to order. Agenda for today, any discussions? Go ahead, Kayleen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend removal of 6.2 MPC presentation. We are missing one of our at-large members and we would like for him to be present for the presentation, and we'll delay this until February.
Okay. I'll question all those in favor of removing 6.2 from this meeting and postponing it to the January meeting? Or 6.?
6.2 or 3?
6.3, 6.3. Those in favor? Carried. Okay, make that amendment. Any other discussion regarding the agenda for today's meeting? Dan moves approval of the agenda for today's meeting. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, now we'll go move on to the minutes of the November 12th, 2024 meeting. Lloyd moves approval of the minutes from the November 12th, 2024 meeting, as presented. All those in favor? Carried. So our first application for today will be Development Permit 24/207. And the applicant is Austin Evans. Is Austin here today? Can you take one of the chairs up front there, please, Austin? So you notice there's a speaker in front of you, so when asked if you have any input, you can just push the button, it'll change color and you'll be live then. Okay, so Becky, can you please go ahead with 24/207?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is, as you said, Development Permit 24/207. This is in Ward 7 for a setback relaxation. The owners of the property are Derek and Kathy Martin, and the applicant today and previous owner is Austin Evans. This is at Plan 1612191, Block 10, Lot 2, which is 4 Dunes Way in Desert Bloom. The property size is 877 meters squared, and the land use district is Recreation Residential Resort District. The proposal is for existing hard surfacing and an existing 12 and 1/2 foot by 12 and 1/2 foot gazebo with a setback relaxation of 1 meter from the side property line and 1 and 1/2 meters from the rear property line. The applicant is requesting approval from the Municipal Planning Commission for an existing gazebo with a proposed setback distance of 0 meters from both the rear and side property lines. This results in a setback relaxation request of 1 meter or 3 feet from the side property line and 1 and 1/2 meters or 5 feet from the rear property line. In addition, the total site coverage will exceed the maximum amount permitted at 41.4%. However, the applicant has supplied a storm water management plan from a qualified engineer dated August 22nd, 2018 to support the additional hard surfacing. The application is a result of a request for a letter of compliance where administration discovered that a development permit had not been issued for the gazebo and additional hard surfacing. The applicant has stated that he was not aware that a development permit was required for this type of structure. As well, the applicant has indicated that the gazebo is movable. However, the property has since been sold and is currently occupied by the new owners, adding a level of complexity to the situation. The gazebo falls outside of the exemption section in the Land Use Bylaw due to its setback variance. In accordance with Section 16.6.1 of the Land Use Bylaw, the Development Authority shall review each development permit application and determine its compliance with this bylaw. When a development permit application includes variances, requests, or discretionary uses, the Development Authority shall assess the application as outlined based on the following criteria in accordance with Section 646 of the MGA: unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring parcels of land, and the proposed development conforms with the use prescribed for that land or building in the Land Use Bylaw. In the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09, under the Recreation Residential Resort District, accessory buildings are considered permitted uses providing the proposal complies with the minimum setback requirements of the district. The minimum required setback for an accessory structure to the side property line is 1 meter, while the minimum required setback to the rear property line is 1.5 meters. In addition, the maximum site coverage for this district shall not exceed 45%. Section 11.9 Drainage and Site Coverage in Hamlet states that the Development Authority may give consideration to a site coverage variance beyond the stated maximum identified in the districts where a development permit application is supported by a stormwater management plan prepared by an accredited member of the Association of Professional Engineers and Geoscientists of Alberta. Section 3.2 Development Permit Exemptions states that non-permanent sun shelters over a deck or patio shall not require a development permit provided that the proposed development meets the setback requirements of this bylaw. So we did circulate the application being that it's in the tri-area IDP, and Cypress County Public Works replied that they have no comments. The City of Medicine Hat replied they have no issues from a regional perspective regarding the proposed gazebo. And at the time of writing this report, no comments were received from the town of Redcliffe. So I do have a couple of pictures, Mr. Chairman. These were taken by the applicant when he still resided in the, at the property. I didn't bother the new owners, but I did drive by and verify yesterday that everything looks as it does in the photos. And I also have a picture from our GIS mapping. So this is the existing gazebo on some composite decking, looking west. And behind the property is the walking trail. And this is just from the gazebo, give you an idea of what kind of structure we're looking at. And then this one's really small, but... There we go. So this is from Range Road 61A, looking down the walking trail. And you can see the existing gazebo just peeking up from the fence there. So, Mr. Chairman, my recommended motion is to approve Development Permit Application 24207 subject to the following conditions. And with the understanding it'll be constructed as outlined in the submitted application, any changes must be submitted for approval by the Development Officer or Municipal Planning Commission. Now, these would all be standard conditions up until number 7, which is setback relaxation of 1 meter or 3 feet from the side property line and a setback relaxation of 1 and 1/2 meters or 5 feet from the rear property line. I have a second alternative motion, and that's to refuse Development Permit Application 24207 as the proposal does not comply with the minimum setback requirements as stated in the Recreation Residential Resort District of the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. Evans, first of all, can you please remove your hat? We have a no hat policy in here. Thank you very much. Would you like to provide your input into this application?
Yeah, like I just wasn't aware that you had to get a permit for like a Canadian Tire gazebo. Like, it's not an actual structure, that's what I thought. But if I would've known, I would've moved it and complied with the rules. But just the fact that like my house sold and we had a 30-day possession and before I got the real property report, this is why it's happening now, like after the fact.
Okay, so that is portable then, even the decking underneath?
Yeah, the decking underneath is just a floating composite decking.
Okay, I'll open the floor to discussion. Anything else? Dan, go ahead.
I appreciate where you're coming from on that. It's just setbacks are for a reason. And if we approve this, we're allowing, we're kind of setting the precedence on everything else that goes on in the area, so... I appreciate the whole situation you're in, but man, this one's right out on the road where everybody can see it. So it's gonna be, just knowing being on MPC, we're gonna hear in another six months or a year, why can't I put mine there because that one's there? And that's the biggest problem we're gonna run into here. I feel bad for the situation, but I don't know that I could support it.
I have one question before we go to the motion. Have we ever given, so essentially this is on the property line, correct? There's zero setback now?
Yeah, essentially it is. It's zero setback. And then keeping in mind, this is a structure that wouldn't normally need a permit. It just has to meet the setback requirements, so that's why we're here.
It would not need a permit?
Yeah, it falls under the exemption section. Under the legislation, I read, Section 3.2, "It's a non-permanent sun shelter over a deck or patio shall not require a permit provided it meets the setback requirements."
So had it be in the right place, we wouldn't be here today.
Right.
But that's the issue that I'm saying, we have an issue with the right place.
Well, Desert Bloom, I think a large portion of our setback relaxation requests are Desert Bloom because it's just smaller lots and people are trying, are putting more, you know, more of a footprint on there. I'm concerned with the precedents as well. I mean, next week we have 20 more applications. Where do we go?
I think Wade asked the question, do we have any that we've approved on the line like that?
I know we've granted setback relaxations in Desert Bloom frequently for pool houses and pools. I wouldn't be able to speak to something like this unless Kayleen has more input.
Yeah, through the chair, nothing with a 0-foot setback variance from, from the rear or side property lines. We have granted variance in the past, but there has been a level of separation between the structures and adjoining property lines.
Is there any issue with water running off of the gazebo roof off of the property?
I'm just gonna have a look. I think Mr. Monroe provided a plan that maybe had setbacks with the eve, so let me just have a peek.
Well, Becky's looking at that as well. There, there might be an opportunity to perhaps look at this on a more temporary basis as well. So in the event of the Planning Commission does want to consider allowing the gazebo to remain, allowing it to remain on a temporary basis. So essentially what that could look like is if the gazebo was ever to be demolished, replaced, removed, that it has to meet the current setbacks. That could be an alternative for the Planning Commission to, to consider as well.
Go ahead, Dan.
Maybe if that was added in, I know it's still set in precedents, but at least with that being added in, if somebody comes in next year and wants one and wants it on the property line, we could have an example why it was done or why we did it. Like again, I'm just scared of that precedence. We've seen it over the last years. We do these things and it comes back and haunts us.
I do have a bit of a concern with, you know, potential water running off of there. You may have a storm retention pond for, installed. But if the water's running off the roof onto the adjoining properties, that doesn't help. Go ahead, Kayleen.
Through the chair, I actually had a question for the applicant. I'm curious on the timeline of when the gazebo was placed there. Was it more recently or was it several years back?
It would've been 20, the fall of 2020.
And from the neighbors, have you heard of any type of runoff issues resulting from the gazebo placement?
No, I haven't.
Go ahead.
Yeah, like, so basically, if it doesn't get approved, I'm losing $2,500 too. That's a substantial amount of money.
Go ahead, Becky.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer your previous question about the water runoff, Mr. Monroe, Monroe Surveys has marked on, on a drawing that we have eve clearances. They range, it's just not completely squared up, but from .09 to .29 from the property line. And at the very corner, he notes it's right on the property line.
So there is potential for that corner runoff to go off of the property line? Okay. It does create a bit of a concern for me. Can it be moved?
Yes, it can. Just if the new homeowners want to move it, it's up to them because technically they're a house now.
I think that's where that condition might be helpful that Kayleen was referring to. So if the new owners come back or that gazebo gets changed in any way, then they'd be notified, we could notify them of that.
Could we also put a condition that if there are any runoff issues from that roof into neighboring properties, that it would be moved at that time? Or is that a, is that a condition that would be?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Kayleen, do you?
Through the chair, under the Land Use Bylaw and under the Water Act, every landowner is required to contain their storm runoff on their property. So there is a regulation in our Land Use Bylaw that we have the ability to enforce. So in the event if there is runoff issues resulting from the placement of a gazebo, the county could end up in a potential enforcement situation if there's a concern between neighboring landowners. But what we could do is maybe an advisory condition on this permit for the benefit of the new landowner, that it's their responsibility to ensure that all runoff is contained on their property and is not to runoff onto adjoining properties. At least, at a very minimum, it's an advisory that it's their responsibility.
Does the county bear any responsibility if we allow a structure to contravene the act?
There could be a potential, yeah, I would say. If we're allowing a permit with, especially if we're granting a variance on our Land Use Bylaw, you know, we, we have to give, we have that discretion. But like Becky mentioned, it's, does it unduly impact the neighbors? Does it unduly impact the neighborhood? If there is a flooding issue or a potential runoff issue, there is that, that potential.
Go ahead, Dan.
It's a little bit of a challenge. Unfortunately, we get, when anything goes wrong, we get the other end of the stick because of our decisions here. But if Dustin has a motion in place, if he'd add that this is a one-time deal and if it gets moved or anything goes wrong, it has to be moved and go to proper setbacks. And the condition that if there's any water runoff, then it's up to the new owner to, to deal with that right away. That takes liability off of us and, and I might be persuaded to do that.
Okay, I think Dustin, if you would, clarify your motion at this time?
Yeah, well, we'll let somebody else word that better, but yeah, we can, we can add that in there. Commending it to that. I, I think it's, it's 12 foot square. The amount of water that it's gonna push is not phenomenal anyways, so...
So your motion contains then a temporary approval? Do you have that, Kayleen? Or Becky, sorry?
Becky's okay with that. I've been drafting a condition. Are you okay with that?
You are the wordsmith, so that's why I went to you right away.
It might not be great, but we'll see what you think about it.
Okay, let's see it.
So two additional potential conditions to consider. Gazebo is allowed to remain on a temporary basis. And if it is to be removed or rebuilt, it will be required to comply with the minimum setbacks in the Land Use Bylaw unless otherwise approved by the county. And then secondly, it is the landowner's responsibility to ensure that all lot grading and drainage is contained on property or directed to a public drainage course. There is a drainage right-of-way at the rear of the property, so they could direct it to that public drainage course, but not onto the adjoining lot.
Okay, so that absolves us of any responsibility then of, of water runoff there, so, okay. All right, so those are the, those are the, that's the motion with conditions? We're good with those conditions?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Dustin moves approval of, excuse me, Development Permit 24/207 with amendments as presented. All those in favor? Carried. So your development permit has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously discussed. The county will mail you a copy of your development permit. Since this is discretionary use, there's now a three-week appeal period that the public may appeal the issuance of this permit. The permit will be advertised in Cypress Courier Newspaper for a duration of three consecutive weeks. If no appeal is filed within that time, the development permit will become valid. If you have any further questions, you can contact the Development Officer after today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next for consideration, Wilfred and Audrey Schneider. Is that you, sir? You wanna take the chair up front, please? Oh, ma'am, I didn't see you as well. I apologize. That's right. Looks like Santa's wish list contains some relaxations this week. So, so we have Development Application 24/211. Wilfred and Audrey Schneider. Go ahead, Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is also in Ward 7 and a setback relaxation, as you mentioned. Development Permit 24/211. And the owner applicants are Wilfred and Audrey Schneider joining us today. This is at Plan 1612191, Block 10, Lot 41, and it's 101 Dunes Way in Desert Bloom. The property size is 985.3 meters squared. Land use district is Recreation Residential Resort District, and the proposal is to construct a 20 by 20 storage shed with a setback relaxation of 1.6 meters from the rear property line. The applicant is requesting approval from the Municipal Planning Commission for a 400 square feet, square foot shed with a proposed setback distance of 1.5 meters or 5 feet from the rear property line. This results in a setback relaxation request of 1.6 meters or 5.2 feet from the rear property line. In addition, the total site coverage is 44%, which complies with the minimum requirement for the district. As the letter of intent indicates, the shed will be utilized for the storage of seasonal equipment such as lawnmower, snow blower, outdoor decorations, tools, et cetera, to alleviate clutter in the attached garage. The property neighbors a public utility lot to the north and the Schlenker Airport to the east. The applicant has requested the relaxation due, or to reduce the amount of landscaping materials. In addition, the required setback would place the storage shed close to the house. In accordance with Section 16.6.1 of the Land Use Bylaw, the Development Authority shall review each development permit application and determine its compliance with this bylaw. When a development permit application includes variances, requests, or discretionary uses, the Development Authority shall assess the application as outlined based on the following criteria in accordance with Section 646 of the MGA: unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring parcels of land, the proposed development conforms with the use prescribed for that land or building in the Land Use Bylaw. In the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09, under the Recreation Residential Resort District, accessory buildings are considered permitted uses providing the proposal complies with the minimum setback requirements of the district. The minimum setback required, ah, the minimum required setback for an accessory structure that is 400 square feet in size is 3.1 meters or 10.1 feet from the rear property line. In addition, the maximum site coverage for this district shall not exceed 45%. We did, we didn't circulate this application as we kind of rushed this one through, but we did talk to both the City of Medicine Hat and the town of Redcliffe verbally, and neither had any comments for the application. So I do have pictures. So this is looking east at the existing residence on the property. And then we're just looking to the left there, down the utility right-of-way. And this is looking at the backyard to the, I guess, the southeast at the proposed location of the shed. And we're looking south into the backyard. Proposed location is just in that bottom-left corner.
For clarification, if you, so the, the kind of the moat area is the, is the area of the yard?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And you can see the edge of it there, good, yeah, okay. I think, I don't, if you can see the stake in the very corner is the edge of the property line. Go down Ingrid. And we're just looking at the backyard again, still from the utility right-of-way. And then we're just looking to the west. Again, the proposed location on the left. I think that's it.
Okay.
So I'll just move on to my recommended motion, sorry, Mr. Chairman, to approve Development Permit Application 24/211, subject to the following conditions. And with the understanding that it will be constructed as outlined in the submitted application. Any changes must be submitted for approval by the Development Officer or Municipal Planning Commission. Numbers 1 through 6 are standard conditions. And number 7 is setback relaxation of 1.6 meters or 5.2 feet from the rear property line. I have an alternative motion- I have an alternative motion as well, Mr. Chairman, and that is to refuse development permit application twenty-four slash two-eleven, as the proposal does not comply with the minimum setback requirements as stated in the Recreation Residential Resort District of the Land Use Bylaw twenty-two-two oh nine. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Becky. Would the applicants like to speak to, um, their application at this time?
She did a pretty good job.
Okay. All right, I'll open the floor to discussion for Planning Commission. Go ahead.
I don't see anything wrong with this one, it's not like the last one. I'll move to approve it.
Okay, so Lloyd moves approval of, uh, development application twenty-four slash two-one-one with conditions as presented, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. So development permit has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously discussed, the county will mail you a, a copy of your development permit. Since this is a discretionary use, there's now a three-week appeal period that the applicant may, or that the public may, uh, appeal the issuance of this permit. Um, the permit will be advertised in Cypress Courier Newspaper for a duration of three consecutive weeks. If no appeal is filed within the twenty-one-day period, the permit will become valid at that time. If you have any, uh, further questions, you may contact the Development Officer after today's meeting to discuss them. Thank you very much. Oh, you're guilty, we're just giving you a little bit of a. You just received probation. Okay. All right, on to the next, uh, portion of the agenda. Planner's report. I see we have a IDP's thick planner's report, anything else to add?
We sure do, Mr. Chairman. We, um, hosted our second open house, um, here two and a half weeks ago. Again, really great, um, outcome, um, really great attendance, I think we had about sixty that were in attendance, um, joint residents, uh, that I think we spoke from, from both Cypress County as well as some City of Medicine Hat residents that showed up as well. Nothing necessarily new arising out of the open house comments that we've heard. Um, one of the sensitive areas continues to be Highway Three twinning, um, and a little bit of, uh, I guess, some clarity from the landowners, particularly along that west portion where the, the highway is going to come into the City of Medicine Hat, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of what that looks like. Um, landowners that are now kind of picturing themselves needing to potentially subdivide for new yard sites, and it's pushing them a little bit, uh, more ahead in terms of their planning. And then to couple that, we have this new agri-industrial area on the west, which is proposed to restrict or limit residential subdivisions, so there's a lot of uncertainty from landowners in that regard. And then the other portion is the potential growth area, south of the City of Medicine Hat, and, um, I guess, potential concerns about the, the distance of that potential growth area, and is it appropriate based on the City of Medicine Hat's growth pattern? So that's still a, a concern that was raised. Reeve Dan was there, Joe was there, Becky was there as well, I'm not sure if you guys had anything else to add in, but I think from my perspective, that was about the, the consensus of what I heard that day.
Just the one other area as well, um, so, uh, we've been looking at sort of a commercial industrial corridor along the one-twenty, uh, and there was some commentary around that too, where there's sort of traditional residential and traditional farming. We might look at some shifting of that to the west closer to the Highway Three corridor, but that's, uh, that'll be some other discussions that'll be coming with IMC coming up this week, or next week.
So the proposed agro-industrial area, um, where would that be?
So that would be on the western boundary of the City of Medicine Hat, um, extending about a mile west of the sixty-three, Range Road sixty-three, north of Big Marble Farms.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Schlenkers have a large land ownership and, and they're a generational, um, farm, right? So they, they're concerned about having that longevity and ability to keep the kids on the farm, so there is some concerns there for sure. So we've been working with them and looking at potential other solutions too.
So is that a private develop, development that's proposed then, or?
There is no development that's currently proposed there. Um, when we're looking at the IDP, it's a long-range plan, so we're trying to look twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty years into the future, and what might that area look like? And between the Highway Three twinning coming through, um, the City of Medicine Hat's work with the airport region and, and the runway extension, it's a logical location. Um, and with the announcement of the, the premier's agro-food corridor along Highway Three, it's, there's a lot of synergy there.
No synergy in certain, certain sectors, I'm sure.
They have said that they, like, Kayleen said, it's a family thing, they do not want to sell, they don't want us, so.
Yeah, well, that's understandable.
Yeah, so it's a fine line of trying to protect the integrity and what that intention of that area is, but also respecting that landowners in the interim have needs that we need to try to accommodate as well, so trying to find that fine line, hopefully.
Are you talking further annexation of that land out there by the city?
Not at this time. No, those annexation conversations haven't even started anywhere in Cypress.
You don't need to annex if you have a, an IDP.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, they've, they've got a pretty full basket. Okay. Thank you very much, um, yeah, we do have to consider it. Nigel moves approval of, of the planner's report as presented, all those in favor? Carried. Um, next meeting to be determined, are we not going to go the second Tuesday, or is that up for?
So through the chair, six-point-two January meeting date. So what happened is due to the Christmas holidays, um, council is stealing our regularly scheduled meeting in January, which is forcing us to look to a, an alternative date, which is totally fine. We're actually not envisioning having a lot of details coming forward in January, we don't have any applications that are crashing through the door, so we're actually proposing to cancel January, and then we'll reconvene our, our regular February meeting.
I'm in favor of canceling January, but the meeting?
Everyone loves the first month of the new year, all our resolutions that we never follow.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we will be notified when the next meeting is, or if there will be a next meeting in January? Any other, uh, I don't think we have anything else on the agenda?
Through the chair, I think we're good to say our next meeting will be February eleventh.
All right, we'll look forward to that. Okay, I adjourn the meeting.